At least a year and then they could drop it. So I guess that means it's a year to year. Your situation. So I just wanted that information to be out there. The other is, is there was talk about possibly changing the name of this program? So I'll leave that up to the board or Main Street can come back with some suggestions or whatever.
Right. We were just looking at how to best go about choosing a business, you know, or selecting a business to be able to be eligible for this. And other communities that we've researched, they've done a business plan competition. And basically the you would have a committee that you would put together and a committee of judges. And then they the the business owner would put together a pitch night. And their business plan to be able to come before this panel of judges. They would do their pitch and then whoever scored the highest through all of that that scoring would be the winner. And then they have the first right of refusal if they didn't want to meet all the standards. So as as I shared with them before, and I know I hope that Dan shared this with you last time. This is a draft. This is just a, you know, the bare bones of, hey, we wanted, we want to put something out there. We want to be able to encourage downtown business growth and new business. So this would be a way to encourage a new business owner to to want to come out and maybe maybe do something like this. And, you know, we haven't written in here that it would be a monthly stipend. So whether it would be $2,000 a month or whatever, whatever that number is that we come up with. That they would have to do certain things. They would have to meet cer- certain criteria along the way to be able to qualify for this. And that would be written into the agreement. So, you know, I they would take different classes. They would be open to having a mentor, someone that comes through along with them throughout the year to help hold them accountable for. Okay, so you're at this benchmark and, you know, you're doing this and to make sure that that they're doing everything they can to be successful. And we're here to support them in that. But it's we also have a provision in here where if they would close their business. Then depending on how many months they've been in business, it would be a prorated amount. They would have to pay the if it's less than 12 months, they would have to pay the entire loan back or grant back.
That was the need for the bottom because it's very unlikely.
Yes, yes.
Right. So can I address real quick? So Alicia, we have confirmed that. Paying a business's rent is considered an appropriate use of TIF funds.
You're asking me to confirm that?
Yes.
I have not confirmed that. I would need to double check.
I'm going to I'm going to say back during COVID, we did do that with a $2,000 deal. John remembers that that we gave to businesses for their rent.
Okay, I would just want to verify that we can still do that now that we're not in COVID times. Because there were a lot of regulations that were in place just during COVID that we were allowed to do that have gone by the wayside. So let me verify that and I'll double check.
Then the the other assumption that it's only for the downtown area as defined by our. Tax allocation area then.
Yes.
Yes.
So basically the nine blocks.
Actually, it's about a 20, 22 block area, I think.
Well, that's right. It goes all the way to Morrison.
Morrison, Clay.
So I talked to just a couple constituents about this and I tried to liken it to other programs. We've seen the facade grant is probably one of the closest things to both aid downtown businesses. And make our downtown more attractive. But I I think that is a very good grant. You know, we've had a lot of discussion over the years on which aspects of it are facade and which is structural. But this one, we're talking about rent. That's why I wanted to ask the question about proper use of TIF monies. Because I believe now this could be considered a little discriminatory to other businesses or other areas of potential growth in the city. We're just in the downtown and and I'm going to guess we're getting trying to get by that by making the Main Street program that we're just funding. We're funding through Main Street. And that's is that the safeguard that?
Actually, actually, we were, we were think the money would still come through the redevelopment commission. We would just be helping to keep the committee together, put the put the. Grant requirements criteria together with I I would like for there to be at least two people from the RDC on this committee. So that not only are you guys, you know, seeing that, hey, that's being used the way we want it to be used. But you also are part of the the, you know, accountability group for it. And and we could do it either way. I I would have to go back to the Main Street Board and say, hey, you know, do you want the money to funnel through us or? You directly, which originally we just said, we would rather it go through RDC so that, you know, we can just do the. The accountability part of it.
And I would say if we're going to change this to be also for remodeling purposes at the beginning. Can that that be the proper way to say it? I mean, as far as.
I I think so. Looking through here, it one of the questions from the thing is, do you own the building or you're going to be leasing it? So if they own the building, obviously, they don't need help with rent. So if they own the building, it's a new business. If we could figure out a way to, you know, help them, we could still, I guess, pay it monthly. Broken down over 12 installments. And that would give us some little bit of protection if the business falls and. We're not paying the whole thing out of front.
I have seen this written in a way. And 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 like I said, this is just a draft. So it is, you know, we want your input on what you want it to say. But I have seen other grants where it's not just regulated to just rent. They could utilize it for, you know, if they want to, if an existing business wants to expand and they want to bring in a new product line or equipment to make. You know, you have a restaurant that wants to bring in some equipment that they can't afford to do. This would be a way that they could possibly do that. So it wouldn't have to be just rent.
So when I when I spoke about a discriminative. Program, I I have to ask the question about, you know, someone who opens a business downtown that is competing against another business that's not in this area. That can get out from the can't. I'm trying to decide what is different about being in the downtown. That makes it okay to get rent assistance, whereas someone located on the east side of town cannot do that. I I get the facade grant. Our our whole idea was revitalization of the downtown. And that was a big part of the RDC being formulated, but the rental assistance, I'm really struggling with this. I I will say I'm probably okay with the remodel aspect of this to help someone get off the, you know, get started. Because it that would be an actual advancement or. Improvements that are, you know, capitalized assets at that point as opposed to paying rent. So I I am struggling with that part of it.
Well, if that's a deal breaker for you, I guess it could be structured where it's not for rent. It's just for expenses they would incur in opening a new business. Whether it be.
Or business improvement.
Inventory, equipment.
Yeah, I again, I think, and I'm just want to go, I I think I could get behind the improvement of property. As opposed to, you know. You mentioned inventory. I I don't I don't think I want to pay again, that 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 level of discrimination against existing businesses, you know, helping someone start up or purchasing inventory or paying rent.
So you you're saying you'd be comfortable with remodeling and the build out and possibly equipment purchase?
Uh, yeah, I I think actual assets that could be considered improvements.
Okay.
You know, still be in the downtown.
All right, I could I could I could get behind that also.
It's it's a stretch, but I think I can get behind that.
Well, you know, from last meeting, we talked about looking this over, coming back with some just suggestions. The problem we're kindy kind of into is we're not going to meet next month. So my suggestion, and I'm just throwing that out there, is if we go ahead and approve the funding pending. This document being put the way we want it to be to start the program for next year. Does that make sense?
Does the funding require more than one vote?
No.
Kim, have you been approached by anybody looking for this sort of assistance?
Actually, we have several times with Moxie Maven was a prime example. When they first opened, they came to me saying, hey, you know, we need another $10,000 to to do the remodel. And we didn't have, Main Street doesn't have an avenue for that. There is there is through the CEF program, a low interest loan that they could apply for, and that's only if funds are available. So when we were looking at, okay, what are some resources that we could possibly help with? You know, again, understanding that this is redevelopment, this isn't Main Street. We just want to be able to provide them an avenue or or some options to be able to, one, you know, we we had. I will tell you, we had five businesses closed last quarter of of 2024. And, you know, lots of lots of concern about that from not only us, but the community as well. And we have been working on this for quite some time to how how can we come up with resources? Whether it's a low interest loan or grant program, you know, what are some some different avenues? And so we I I've researched several other communities that offer things like this. And it was funded through their redevelopment commissioner, their TIF district or business improvement district. And so, you know, I that's when we, you know, sat down and said, hey, what do you think about this? Is this something that we could possibly help initiate? And but yes, there are many businesses that approach us saying, you know, gosh, if we, is there any help for this? And to be honest with you, there's not unless they go get a personal loan or a small business loan.
Well, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I think we're inclined to, you know, willing to offer something on this. We just got to get everything down in writing as to what how we want to go about it.
Alicia will be able to help us on that, won't you?
Help you write.
Yeah, revamp this to get it to where we need it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to need guidance on what you actually want. But sure, yeah, I'd be glad to. I've been looking to see if I can find anything about rental assistance while I've been sitting here. I haven't found anything yet specific to that. There's a whole slew of things that TIF dollars can be used for, and it's statutory. Rental assistance isn't in that statute, but that doesn't mean that that's not an interpretation of that statute that it can be used. So I'm looking for that now.
Any other questions or?
So you got any other questions for Kim and what's the board's pleasure?
So you're saying you'd like to 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 approve this pending the final.
We need to approve the money for 26.
Okay, sure.
All right. At least have it budgeted. I know it was in our budget conversations at one point.
And then we will need to see the final draft of this for the final approval.
My suggestion is, is yes, then we'll prove the money, but it won't go into effect until this is complete and everybody's approved.
Are you talking about amending the spending plan to increase the to this amount?
Yes.
And that needs to be done before the calendar year change. Is that the thought process?
Done by December 1st, so.
Okay, well, I will make a motion. That we approve. Are we looking at 20,000?
I think it's 40 total.
And so that would be for two.
Two grants.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we approve funding of $40,000 for grants. And this will be pending final agreement that we agree to on. This thing.
On the program itself.
Yeah.
Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. And everybody's clear on how that's working, right? All favor, signify by saying aye, aye, opposed. Okay, so we'll get busy on it.
Okay, and if you can let me know if you have two people that are willing to serve on this committee. I'd like to start meeting and do something by the first first quarter at least.
You guys, interesting. I'll do it.
Okay.
It'll be John and and Jeremy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll be in contact.
Okay. Next on old business is Don.
Just want to give you an update on 308 North Main Street. Today I received a a the report from KJG Engineering on the structural. Of the building located at 308 North Main Street. The services were requested by the City of Frankfurt Building and Service Department to determine the overall condition and stability of the building. And specifically its potential impact to public safety. The building adjoins a neighborhood building to the south. There's a public sidewalk along the east and alleys running along the north and west sides of the building. The building is constructed of a concrete floor slab, wood roof structure and brick exterior walls with steel beams used as lentils over the large openings. The building is currently vacant. Several structural issues that were observed during our inspection included loose and unstable brick at the northeast corner. Large vertical gaps between the sections of bricks at the northeast corner. Broken or discontinuous steel lentil beams above east garage doors. Diagonal cracking above the east garage doors, cor- corroded steel lentils above the north windows. Cracked sprawled brick above the north windows, shifted offset brick near the gutter line along the north wall. Deteriorated mortar joints at the northwest corner. Vertical brick crack on the west wall and loose and unstable brick above the west window. KJG did not have access to the roof of the building. The interior ceiling is largely intact, indicating that there have not been significant long term roof leaks. Based on our inspection of this property is our professional opinion that the exterior brick walls are in poor condition. Particularly at the corner of the buildings and around openings. There is currently instability in portions of the brick wall and at the lentils which support weight above the multiple openings. Therefore, it is KJG Engineering professional opinion that the building should not be occupied in its current condition. And significant renovations would be needed to restore the building to a safe and occupable conditions. Furthermore, because the building is bounded on three sides by alley and a public sidewalk. We have concerns that loose bricks should fall from the building and even isolated sections of walls, particularly around the openings. Could collapse and potentially impact the surrounding areas. Therefore, we recommend that the selective demolition and or structural stabilization be implemented immediately at this property. Please note that our inspection was only visual in nature. We did not test or take material samples of any structural components. Our observation and recommendations are professional opinion based on engineering principles and evident that visible at the time of our inspection. Furthermore, such as soil analysis, material samples and load testing would be required to confirm our opinion or calculate the exact structural capacity of building components as they exist today. If you have any questions regarding this report or require structural engineering service in the future, please contact KJG Engineering sincerely, Jeremy Duff. So I don't know if they have a totally said that the building needs to be demolished. But it does say that they recommend that sections of it that they recommend as far as their. Structural issues be looked at as far as maybe being removed, the parts that are that are loose or disjointed. Or in the case of the parapet wall peeling from the from the building itself. To probably start to eliminate those type of things so they won't come falling upon people or or cars going down the alleyway. But as far as the demolition, I don't know if it says that. I know, Alicia, that I I've given this to you late. I got it late today. I don't know if you want to go through a better reading, understanding before we jump to any type of a conclusion about demolition.
Well, I think that the thing that we need to clarify about the demolition is that if it were to be demolished. I don't think that that would be a decision that the redevelopment commission can really make. That's a decision that the city would need to make. They would have to go through the Board of Public Works. The Board of Public Works would then need to file in court to get an order that we can demolish that building. So I don't know that you all would necessarily have the ability on your own to get this building demolished. Now, whether or not you could potentially fund a demolition, if the city determined that it was in the best interest of the city to move forward with that. That's something that we could look at down the road, but there'd be a process that we'd have to go through before we could even get to that point. We need to take this letter and we need to file in court and and get an order to demolish the building before the redevelopment commission could really fund anything or anything like that. So if the redevelopment commission were to acquire the property, which I know you have tried to do in the past, then you all could demolish it. But right now, since it's not owned by you all, you wouldn't be the proper board by which to move forward with that demolition.
Makes sense.
So.
Would it be fair to say that this letter being presented to, is it Miss Ingram?
She has not received.
I know, I know, but isn't that her name, Mrs. Ingram? Either the issue would be she either invest money into that building and straighten it up. Or potentially go the other way, which is either court or sell.
I mean, I definitely think that this could be presented to her and to show her how bad the building is. And then I think it would be a conversation that the Board of Works would need to have regarding whether or not they wanted to move forward with. Taking further action to, you know, enforce this. I I think there are different steps that could be taken, like the city could condemn it and say that it's not fit for people to be inside. That's one step. That doesn't get us all the way, though. Just because we condemn it doesn't give us the the power to take it down. So I think that that's a conversation that needs to be had. I think sharing this information with her would put her on notice that something needs to be done. And the city is not just going to sit around and let this continue to deteriorate. And maybe at that point she would say, hey, I'm going to have to deal with this one way or another. Maybe I want to sell it. But I think that that's kind of where we're at at this point.
Can can you remind the board what the response was when we offered to buy it?
Yes, there was no response directly. A sign was put in the yard for sale. And my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Dawn, was that they maybe believed that they could get more out of the building than we were willing to pay to acquire it.
They didn't turn down the offer. There was simply no response.
I never received a response. Did you?
I never got a turn down. They just didn't accept it and went got another person to put a for sale sign in. Because that person thought they could get more money out of it.
Was it a realtor or?
No, no.
And there was two other potential buyers.
There was, and both of them have backed out.
Yes.
So I got a I got a letter from Barbara about, well, be two weeks ago, before my vacation, before my vacation. And and she made it sound like there was another potential buyer, but she didn't say who and she didn't follow up with it. So I always take that as a. No action going on type thing because I've I've been doing this for about a year.
Right.
So could we potentially? Send the same offer again with this report and say it is our last offer before we wash our hands with it and just make it a city condemnation issue? I mean, we have no authority to say that, but saying, you know, trying to help the situation before it goes to that.
Yeah, I mean, I I think that it it would be up to the Board of Works to say whether or not they were going to pursue additional action. So I wouldn't want to say in any sort of.
We could say that is a potential action.
Oh, sure. I mean, you could say that the city could potentially take further action, including court demolition, that sort of thing. You could certainly share the options. I wouldn't want to bind the city in any way to that or or say we are doing something. Because again, that would be the Board of Works decision. But I do think that you could send this letter and you could say, here's our final offer. This is what we know, and these actions could be taken by the city if they so choose. And if they do, here are the consequences of that.
I think I'd like to add to that, gentlemen, that the RDC, what do you think about the RDC officially asking the city not to take any condemnation action? For 30 or 60 days to allow time for our offer to be reviewed.
I think you could certainly do that and ask the Board of Works to pause on it. I I think that that would be reasonable. Again, whether or not they would do that, that would be up to that board, but.
Well, I mean, I'm thinking that, you know, if our offer, we could send with it is that we officially ask the city to give us 30 days to try to work with the property owner.
I I also think if if this board decides that that's the route that they want to take, the Board of Works has a meeting on Monday. And you could even talk to the Board of Works and get their official, hey, we won't take action on it, that you could then definitively put in that letter. We have spoken with the Board of Works. They won't take action or they've committed to not take action if that's what they decide for a period of this long. But here are the consequences that could occur.
I think the Board of Works wants to just solve the problem as easy as they can. Talking with them. But again, we've kind of been, we put the information out there, but we're not getting a whole lot back from the other sides.
I think this may make it a little bit more definitive if we if we put it that way.
I agree with you.
I think there should be some concern about the safety of that area. And time is of the essence.
That that would be my reason for not wanting to give more than 30 days.
The last I looked.
Consider the offer.
One of the windows in the alley was completely open. Anybody going out of that building?
And has been seen going in.
And it's. I think there'd be a big liability right now on the city's part.
Well, I think I'd be prepared to put that into a form of a motion.
I would.
That motion would be to. Provide the property owner with the report we just received from KJG with our restated offer to purchase. And in so doing, ask the city to give us 30 days. Allow the property owner 30 days before the city will take further action.
I'll second that motion. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Did you get all that, Wanda?
Oh, yeah.
Can you carry that to the Board of Works for us?
Sure. Yes, I can. I'll email it to Carol that that needs to be on the agenda and I can discuss that with them on Monday. And then if they do approve that 30 day hiatus, I guess I'll call it. Do you want me to go ahead and prepare a letter to send with this? Or would you like someone else to do that?
I would say, no, I would, it's either going to be you or Dawn. I would say you. For the sole purpose of probably ought to send it certified just to make sure that she gets it.
Sure.
And we'll go from there. So we do have a motion. I have a motion in a second on the floor. So let's go all in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, opposed. Okay. Didn't mean to cut you off. I just wanted to get the motion.
You're fine. I'll so I'll bring that to the Board of Works then, and then I will, assuming that they do approve, I will go ahead and get a letter drafted. I will get with Dawn to get the address of Barb's, is that her name? Barbara.
Yeah.
And I will send that along with the potential ramifications that could occur if they don't do something.
I know Wanda is going to know that about the Board of Works. But if she would, if you'll let her know and she can send us out an email what the Board of Works has chose to do.
Yes.
I would appreciate that.
I can report back to Wanda. Yep. And then for the letter, do you want to review that first, Joe, before I send it? Or do you want me to just go ahead and send it?
I can.
It's up to you. It's up to you.
Because I'm not the lawyer here, so.
Okay, all righty. Thank you.
Okay, any other old business from anybody? If that's the case, I'm three or four minutes over what I said. So we'll call the meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Yes, happy holidays. And I told Eric that I would not. And I told Eric that I would not, we would not have a December meeting unless it's something desperate.